I think everyone's seated. Good evening. We'll wait for the audience to be seated. Thank you. We do have a quorum, and I'd like to call the August 23rd, 2016 meeting of the Board of Education to order. And we have a very special guest. This is always great now that school's started. We have a student back with us to help us with our Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. And this is Emma Fentress, 4th grade student at Hancock Elementary. Welcome, Emma. If you'll walk up to the mic.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Emma, welcome. Stay up at the mic.
Sorry.
That's a great smile. So, I think you have some special guests that you brought with you this evening. Would you like to introduce them to the board?
This is my mom. This is my mom, Angie Fentress. And then that's my principal, what's her first name? Shelley Guest.
Very good. Welcome. Thank you so much for being here to support Emma this evening. So, Emma, I think earlier you told me you had a lot of pets. Would you like to go down the list?
I have four cats, a dog, a hermit crab, and a guinea pig. The guinea pig is Princess Angel. The hermit crab is Shelley. I want her at the something carnival. I think it was the Clear Spring Carnival. And it was a surprise to her. But the four cats, I have two black ones, which are Shadow and Pumpkin. You just found out that one's a boy not too long ago.
That's usually helpful information.
And then we have one kitten named Belle. She is a crazy color cat. And she has a crazy personality. If I pick her up sometimes and bring her in the house, you can just see it in her eyes that she's a little freaked out. But then the third cat, Whiskers, I'm not sure what cat he is, but he looks like a fluffy Siamese cat.
Very good. Thank you. So, we've been in school. We're in the 5th day of school. So, how is it so far?
Good.
Would you like to expand on that? Just good?
I like the rotations a lot.
Okay. Can you help us understand what a rotation is?
Well, this year, the 4th grade and 5th grade teachers are teaching four different subjects. First, we have, like, we get to school, and then we have to do, like, check in and everything really quickly so that we can go to our encore after the bell rings. And then after encore, we come back, and we have rotation one, which, like, some days we can go, we can stay at our homeroom, or we could go to the other 4th grade, or one of the 5th grade rooms.
Sounds like you have it all figured out very quickly. Okay. Any special subject that you, a favorite subject you like in school?
Reading and writing.
Very good. Anything you'd like us to know about you?
I was adopted from Guatemala whenever I was eight months old.
Very nice. Wonderful. Welcome. Thank you so much for spending time with us this evening. Thank you. Okay. And we would like to take just a moment at the beginning of the meeting to introduce some special guests who are with us this evening. And we have Mr. Neal, who is with us with his scouts and several other leaders. And they're here to take some notes from the meeting, and this is part of their community and citizenship merit badge work. So, Mr. Neal, if you'd like to maybe come forward, and I think Dr. Wilcox wanted to make a special recognition.
Why don't we let his young scout speak first? And then we'll do it with him up?
Well, we have to approve the agenda and the amendments generally before we do that. Would you like to have?
Let us do that first. Sorry.
Want to wait and do recognition at that time?
I'll give them the gift when the young man speaks.
Very good. Okay. So, let's go ahead then and do the agenda. Approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on the agenda? All those in favor? That's 6-0, and student concurs. We have several sets of minutes?
Yes. Madam President, I move for approval of the first set of minutes for the closed session held on Tuesday, August 9th, 2016.
Thank you. Second for the first set of closed session minutes?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Harding, is any discussion? All those in favor? Any abstentions? One abstention, six approve, and one abstention. Thank you. Next set.
Madam President, I move for approval of the second set of closed session minutes for the meeting held on Tuesday, August 9th. Closed session.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Abstention? Six approval and one abstention. End of final set.
Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes of the work session held on Tuesday, August 9th, and the minutes of the business meeting held that same day, Tuesday, August 9th, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion of minutes? All those in favor? Abstention? One. Thank you. All right. That brings us now to public comment. And Mr. Harris, would you like to come forward? You can sit right at the mic, or if you'd like to stand and speak in that, you're welcome to do that as well.
So, as you heard, my name is Dean Harris, and I was wondering why in middle school, as a soccer player, why soccer isn't offered as an official sport?
We usually don't do questions and answers, but I think we'll make an exception if my colleagues are all right with that. And Dr. Wilcox, would you like to respond to that question?
No. I don't know, but I will find out why we don't offer it. You know, we don't really have the traditional competitive athletic programs at the middle schools that we do at the high schools in terms of the full complement of activities. But let me ask why we have not included soccer in that mix. And then I'll get back to you through your scout leader. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Neal, if you'd like to come forward, I think Dr. Wilcox has something for you.
Although I'm reconsidering right now.
Jared, up here, he's our acting patrol leader right now.
Jared, thank you. I just want to tell you how much scouting means to all of the board members, but it also means a lot to our community. We think the foundations for leadership are laid as you become a scout, and we know that every good scout troop needs a good flag. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, this is an American flag that we hope you'll fly proudly, and this is a flag from the great state of Maryland that we hope you'll fly proudly as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's the only individual I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the board at this time? Thank you, Emma. Have a good evening. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on. And is there any of my colleagues who would like to speak to the earlier comments by the scout? Okay. We have no unfinished business. That takes us to new business was the consent agenda. Mr. Bechtel, welcome.
Good evening. Tonight, I have four items for your review, the details of which were included in your board packets. The first item is VMware server software utilizing NJPA contract. Staff is recommending award to CDW Government LLC at a total cost of $116,081.14. Item number two is a sole source item. It's renewal of library media content management software. Staff is recommending renewal with library video company at a total cost of $76,060. Item number three is wireless access points for the Center for Educational Services. We would be utilizing the Baltimore County Public Schools contract, and staff is recommending award to Bell Tech Logic at a total cost of $46,669.15. And item number four is also wireless access points for Washington County Public School system-wide. Again, utilizing the Baltimore County Public Schools contract. Staff is recommending award to Bell Tech Logic at a total cost of $344,235. And staff is here to answer any questions on these items.
Very good. Thank you. This requires a motion.
Madam President, move to approve the purchase of VMware software to CDW Government LLC at cost of $116,081.14. Library media content software renewal to library video company at $76,060. Wireless access points to Bell Technologic at $46,669.15. And wireless access points to Bell Tech Logic at $344,235.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Okay. Questions on this consent agenda? Four items before us this evening. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? 6-0, and student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a consideration of a donation to Williamsport High School. Mr. Akers, welcome.
Good evening, President Breitman, members of the board. Dr. Wilcox, on behalf of Williamsport High School, I'm requesting your approval of a generous donation of $8,166.67 from the Williamsport High School Athletic Boosters. The funds will be used for a new sound system in the Williamsport High School gymnasium.
Thank you. A motion on this item, please.
Madam President, I move to approve the gift of $8,166.67 from the Williamsport High School Athletic Booster Club.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. So, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Any discussion, questions on this item? All those in favor? 6-0, and student concurs. Please thank the booster club for us. Excellent.
Thank you.
That takes us to formal action. Dr. Pugh is with us. We'll be looking at the letter that we formulated based on our work session. This is a requirement by the legislation, House Bill 452. And everyone received the draft letter. So, if there, we will need a motion on this, and then we'll have discussion.
Madam President, I recommend approval of the Washington County Public School Board of Education's comments and recommendations regarding the final report on local, state, and federally mandated assessments as required by the House Bill 452/Chapter 421.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Second?
Second.
Mr. Reidenauer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Questions on the draft letter? Comments? Yes, Mrs. Harshman?
I just had a couple little corrections here that I don't know if, on the draft, it's listed on my draft, so I made them on it, and they were just things like, there was a comma under recommendations, 2.1B, it says, "Assessment of National..." No, that's not it, I'm sorry. Down below that, where it says, "Class periods, comma, without the need to alter the school, the normal school day." I don't think we need to put the comma in there. It's just a continuation of that. Okay? And at the bottom of that page, it says, "Application for student interventions." Perhaps that should be "of student interventions," "application of student interventions." And over on the next page, where it says, "Washington County, or WCPS uses our local," should be "its local." WCPS uses its local. And then there was one place that turned out not to be a sentence, and that would be 7.1. I don't know if you want to change that in order to make it a complete sentence, since everything else is.
You're referring to the concern or the recommendation on 7.1?
Oh, I'm sorry. 7.1 concern, yes.
Add "was expressed" or "was discussed" after 7.1?
7.1 concern. Significant concern regarding a citizen advisory committee around student confidentiality.
Was discussed?
Something like that.
Just finish it.
Just to make it into a full sentence, yeah. And the last one is down at the bottom where it says, 7.5. It says, "Report out." I don't think the "out" needs to be in there. Just "report the quality of early care whether districts choose."
Do you have that, Dr. Pugh?
I do. The language of the recommendation is in the report, so that's their language, but I'll make the change.
Report out?
That's what their report was. That's fine. I can change it on your.
Maybe they didn't have a proofread. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Everyone noted those changes? Any discussion on any of those grammatical changes? Any content changes, concerns? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? 6-0, student concurs. Thank you. Takes us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Wilcox?
My report will be brief this evening. Simply wanted to say to the board and to the community that we had an outstanding opening of school. We were fully staffed. We, I think, received a little over 20,000 young people on day one. We're still looking for a number of students to get to our total projected enrollment of 22,000, but each day, more and more students kind of enter the hallways. So, we're excited about this year. It is the first year of our full rollout of our iPad initiative, and quite honestly, we're already hearing great things. We have a number of students who are now helping us to move through a number of the challenges that come with any rollout, but all in all, we had a great start to the beginning of the school year. With that, I would take any questions from board members about anything that they heard. Probably the biggest challenge right now, and board members, you know, because we talked about this earlier today, are some of the enrollment bubbles that we find ourselves with, particularly at the elementary level, where we've had a couple of classes across the system that are larger than we would like them to be. We're looking at places where we can either make changes to the allocated staff, or where we might have to dip into our contingency. As I told you earlier today, we already have looked at adding a kindergarten position at Old Forge Elementary School that was very well received by the majority of families that I've been in contact with, although I imagine tomorrow I'll hear from some people who didn't want to leave the teacher that they were assigned to. So, I'll keep you informed of that. But again, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the first five days of school, Dr. Wilcox's report? Seeing none, we'll move to personnel action. Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, as discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review and approval this evening.
Thank you. A motion on personnel?
I move for the approval of personnel actions as recommended by staff.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. All those in favor, please signify. Abstention? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Brings us to reports to the board. Ms. Greenwall, would you like to start?
Washington County Association of Student Councils just had an exec board meeting, and our first general assembly is set for September 7th at Boonsboro High School. I'll send an agenda before the meeting, about a week before, and I invite all to attend.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Mrs. Harshman?
Yes. HR met today and discussed the new hires and how effective our recruitment was and ways of improving our recruitment for the next year. We will meet on September 27th at 9:00. The agenda will be posted, and everyone is invited. It will be up in the Washington room. Also, Mr. Gaspard isn't here for facilities, and he asked me to state that facilities will also meet on September 27th at 7:45 in the morning, and that's upstairs. I'm not sure which room that is, but that agenda also will be posted.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
Yes. The Finance Committee has not met since our last board meeting. We do have a Finance Committee meeting set for August 30th at noon in the 3rd floor conference room.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy Committee met August 16th. Mrs. Francisco, the Director of Human Resources, joined us and reviewed several handouts that she had provided for us with a few days before the meeting, including background, meeting minutes, and agendas from the Diversity Task Force. We discussed briefly the details that need to be established for an ad hoc committee that would research and make recommendations to the board for a committee to address the issues and concerns of the current task force. Mr. Trotter will be formulating a purpose, charge, timeline, and description of the membership of the ad hoc committee for recommendation, excuse me, to the full board. The next, and next, the Policy Committee addressed some concerns that recently had been submitted by several members of fundraising organizations, as well as some recommendations that were submitted by our own finance department. Mr. Brandonberg joined us for this discussion. Topics included check signatures, online banking, alternatives to audits, teacher involvement in fundraising organizations, and student safety. In view of these and other concerns that have been recently submitted to the committee, the first read of the fundraising policy has been postponed until September 6th at the business meeting. And our next policy meeting is scheduled for August 31st at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you. Mr. Reidenauer?
Thank you. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee has not met since our last meeting. We will be meeting, what is it, September 27th, at a time and place to be announced in the future.
Thank you. Any other reports? Anything from Mabe? Okay. Brings us to Ms. Lanius, future agenda items. The only item at this point that we have listed is the FY 2016 Financial Statement Audit and Audit of Federal Funds. That will come before the board on October 4th. And as always, there will be a weekly updated calendar provided in your packets. Any discussion on future agenda items? Anything a board member would like to bring forward? Seeing none, that brings us to board member comments. Ms. Greenwall?
Yes. As my high school has been in the process of receiving iPads, seen a lot of excited students, and have also heard a lot of questions from students at my school, but not only them, students all around the county. Students have been asking questions, some of which I know how to answer, like, what does iPad insurance cover? How much does it cost? But then there were other questions that I don't really know the answer to, such as, what should my family and I do if I don't have consistent access to Wi-Fi? And through discussion with Dr. Wilcox and Dr. Pugh, WCSC is committed to creating outlet for students to ask these questions. We're currently working out semantics, but the overarching goal is to connect students with questions to the appropriate outlets to ask them and to connect them with people who have the answers or are able to find the answers. I'll keep the board posted as this project evolves.
Thank you. Good information. Good work. Mrs. Harshman?
No comment.
Mrs. Williams?
I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
Dr. Wilcox, any additional?
Only to reiterate, well, I couldn't say that, what our student board member has just indicated to this board, and that is, she and her team of leaders have been very, very helpful to us in this process. Not long ago, we had some students who posted some things on Twitter, kind of taking us to task over some things. We then asked Erica if she would be kind enough to go with us to meet with the students. She gladly did that, and quite honestly, I think that kind of calmed down some of the folks who had some issues. So, having students speaking to students was really important, and I think she demonstrated the leadership that this board would want in one of its members speaking with students. So, I want to thank her publicly. Erica, thank you.
And I did have one question. If you had said there was a process in place for students beyond this newer process to work through the student government, could you just take a moment and explain what that looks like?
So, that process evolves from high school to high school. I can only really speak to North Highs, but if a student were to have a question about an iPad or have a concern... an iPad or have a concern, if it would be something that our principal would deal with, North High has a principal advisory committee that meets about once every two months, where we make various suggestions, from getting different water fountains to transitioning from paper towels to like hand dryers, just all different types of things. But ideally, those students would go to their student government, share their concerns, and then the student government would either connect them with me, and either I would connect them to Dr. Wilcox or someone who could answer their questions, or perhaps it would be a school-based issue. The problem that we saw with these other students is they didn't have the proper outlets. They didn't know the appropriate people to go to. So, that's a second part of what we're doing with this outlet, is making sure that all of the schools in the county have some set of directions or like a way to navigate questions and concerns of students in school and for students all around the county.
Good work. Thank you. Dr. Harding?
Just to reemphasize and add my observation too, to the great energy that there is in the schools, particularly surrounding, I mean, the principals and teachers have blown up my Twitter here, which is great, because they're very enthusiastic about what they're doing and want to share what they're doing. Their students want to share. It's clear that there is excitement, and a big part of what we do is public relations and communication, and telling people the stories of the successes. And I'm glad to see so many of our employees and students taking to social media, and I'm sure other outlets as well, to not only let board members and administrators, but to let the community and students and their parents know what they're doing, what they're excited about, things they're thinking about. I think it's really been a great addition to this rollout of the school year. I also want to thank the folks in all the athletic departments. We had some awfully, awfully hot weather the last couple of weeks, and I know there were people even from this building constantly monitoring about what was safe to go outside and whether our athletes should be practicing on some of the days when it was particularly hot. It's just a reminder to me, and I think, I hope to everybody, that we trust our children with the care and judgments of the teachers, principals, adults, athletic directors, coaches in our schools every day. And every day they're making those judgments, and I appreciate the diligence with which they go about their responsibilities.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I believe congratulations are in order for Nicole Marshall, for her selection to serve on the National Committee to Design the Algebra I Praxis Exam. And along with that, Nicole, along with Amy Seiler and Dr. April Bishop, will be presenting a session on writing math cornerstones for the Maryland Council of Teachers of Mathematics at their conference, and they're giving up their free time to do that. So, thank you to those ladies, and again, congratulations to all four of them, or all three of them, excuse me.
Thank you. Mr. Reidenauer?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to read something that I've written. "Two years ago during the election cycle, I described several of the BOE candidates and their supporters as hopeless political hacks. This statement was the result of what I perceived as inappropriate activities surrounding an ongoing personnel action, as well as continued negative comments and attacks. However, none of this should be used as an excuse. What I said was an inappropriate comment to make in a public forum, for which I apologize. While it appears these types of comments and actions have become the norm in elections, I should personally attempt to hold myself as an educator in public service to a higher standards. I will endeavor to control my emotions in the future so as to better serve the children and citizens of Washington County." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. And I will close. I know the school system under Dr. Wilcox's leadership and the board have really made an effort over the last year to put out all the good things, the positive things, and the great progress we're making here in the school system and our vision of building community. And so, to sort of continue on Dr. Harding's theme on that, I wanted to share a letter. The board receives packets every Friday, and in that, we often receive information that goes to Dr. Wilcox from staff. And this is in reference to a donation made by State Farm to our Food and Nutrition Services. And I thought the letter was particularly, the response or thank you note from Mr. Prue was worth reading and sharing with the public. Says, "Thank you for granting your valuable financial resources towards the farm-to-school programs of Washington County Public Schools. Over the last six years, we have been actively engaging our local farm network to provide the freshest possible products to our students. Going local is more than a buzzword for WCPS. Our farm-to-school program allows us to spend federal funds in our local community, investing in local farms, and becoming an engine for economic development. Your gifts supported the purchase of packaging machines for our fresh, scratch-made marinara sauce. This product will be used in various recipes throughout the school year. The equipment facilities facilitates our ability to buy local product at the peak of freshness and to process and pack it for use at a later time, just like we do in our own homes. On behalf of the Washington County community, thank you. And if you have interest in seeing the program work firsthand, please reach out to me." So, again, we have great employees, great folks in our system, and this is really all part about building community and working with our local folks and local farmers. I just thought it was a great example of our vision in the school system. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We've come to the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you.